Okay. Call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda if there's no changes or modifications?
Motion to approve the agenda, sir, for June 1, 2023.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Purchase order log. Anything for Tracy back there? Do I have any comments, questions? All righty. Internal budget revisions. None this week?
No, sir.
So we're good to go. All right. Change in status received from Jack Lang, Facilities Director for Andrew Knoller. He is going from a custodian to facilities worker two with his salary will go from thirty-two thousand six, two sixty-five to forty-three thousand one thirty-five effective July 1, 2023. We have the approval of the minutes. Everyone was present. They had the council calendars. Today we are here. Let's see.
Well, that's a good place to be.
Right here. That's right. June the thirtieth. God, June 1st. I wonder what we may go to. Nothing this evening or Friday. Five p. On Monday, you had five p.m. Water District, six p.m. Planning Commission. The sewer and water, stormwater districts were canceled. Nothing on Wednesday. Next Thursday is six-thirty p.m. Fire Board. Any other changes to serve?
Mr. President, if I may, last week, the council directed staff to post the proposed changes to the subdivision ordinance, and you indicated that about forty-five days out, you want it publicly scheduled. We have tentatively scheduled the public hearing for the subdivision, proposed revisions to the subdivision ordinance for Thursday, July thirteenth, if that's agreeable to the council.
It is okay with me.
Do you want, I mean, since it's going to involve businesses primarily, do you just want one? Do you want two? We have it scheduled for eleven. We didn't know if you wanted it at six o'clock or not.
It's a pleasure, the board. It's a pleasure, the board, I think we should.
11 and 6. Be fair, we should.
Okay.
You got it.
Thank you, sir.
Thursday, July 13th at 11:00 AM and 6:00. That leave will add, will go out today.
Okay. Boarding commission calendars are already done there. Have a canceled check. Is that right? Yep, canceled check from the clerk's office. Any other items that we need to discuss on that? Consent agenda, if not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Today we have nothing from the assessor, it's amazing.
Moving right along.
Yeah, we are, gonna be a short day. Board of meeting reports, Mr. Boyd, will I start with you, if that's all right?
I did not have any group meetings. Did attend the, um, the Department of Highways thing last Thursday, along with pretty much everyone else. Gave a good presentation on the electric and we had a good discussion with the road, so. Those two gentlemen over here, Eddie and Steve made some good points, I'll let them talk about that one.
Yes, they did. Did very good. Mr. Bernhardt.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, I had no meetings, but I did attend, I had no scheduled meetings, but I did attend a Tuscoree Creek Project Team Meeting, which was held at Shepherd University Martinsburg Center. It was put on by DEP, Alana Hartman, if anybody knows Alana, I've known her for twenty years. And they had City of Martinsburg Stormwater People, had Burke County Stormwater People, had several, Region 9 was there, several representatives from DEP, the Urban Tree guy from Region 8, the Peckin Team Project Group, several others, but this is about the Tuscoree Creek. They had talked about Tuscoree Creek watershed status as priority watershed. Stormwater, Martinsburg Stormwater Department gave updates, talking about their, their interns and all that kind of stuff. Bob Williams was there talking about Parks and Rec with items along Tuscoree Creek, like Poorhouse Farm Park War Memorial Park. And then they talked about what they call NFWF, which is.
You didn't say NFW, did you?
No, NFWF, N-F-W-F.
Just clarifying.
Yeah. NFW was in there, but.
I'm up later.
Yeah.
You have a title on the day, that, haven't you, trust me?
It was a good meeting because as a member of the local government advisory committee to the Executive Council of Chesapeake Bay, interested to see all these local agencies and groups getting together, Mill Creek, Tuscoree, Peckin, and putting their heads together to try and improve the stream quality of those streams.
Is Back Creek still the most pristine?
It is here.
It is here.
Yeah. Well, there's nothing on it.
No, not yet.
No. Sewer treatment plants running into it.
No, it's, it's far enough west or northwest in Virginia that it's not going to be affected by anything.
Drains gore, that's where it starts, basically, and the fills above the gore.
Right there, near the sand mine?
Yeah. Yeah, drains the sand mine.
Yeah, it does. Mr. Catley.
Okay, last Thursday was a busy day, after a meeting, I attended along with yourself, Eddie and HD, the meeting with Department of Highways. Matt Mullen next was there, who is the executive director of the MPO for this area. You know, Lee Thorne was directing the meeting, and I think his main responsibility out of District 5 is to maintain the existing roads and probably should have been more complimentary to what they've done. I know one of the things they did do, and I should have complimented him on that, and I didn't, was in this past year, they repaved, Drive Run Road extended all the way out to Tomahawk, they repaved Butler's Chapel Road, and that's, that road across Parks Gap is called the Hedgesville Bypass, by the way, that's where we refer to it out of Arundel County, and, but it has made a significant difference on traveling those roads, which I do often. They were full of potholes and just a real mess, and they're really nice now, so. But the main focus, of course, we had on, well, there was officials there from the Commissioner's Office out of Charleston, and Jason, the guy with the beard and suspenders, was, he's actually one of the big honchos, honchos down there. He's, he and Greg Bailey are the two people under Briston. And when we met in Charleston, Eddie and I, he was one of the five that met with us. And Matt told me, when I walked into the meeting, get his ear, because he has Briston's ear, so. And of course, we talked during the meeting, but then afterwards, I spent a half hour with him after the meeting, just one-on-one with him. And I was real appreciative of his time, because I really left there feeling, I don't know if anything's going to happen, but they know where we stand right now, we need help, and I really believe that. And of course, by our MPO making the nine bypass the Tier One project for this area, that's certainly going to continue to bring attention to this need. And I truly believe that if they would just focus from another alternate route other than nine from Hedgesville to Martinsburg is the main issue that everybody's concerned about. There is no traffic issues from Back Creek Bridge to Berkeley Springs. There are safety issues with curves, but there's no traffic issues. And if they would just focus on that, we could improve that area tremendously. Another gentleman that was there came up to me, and I had a map of the nine bypass around Hedgesville, I gave it to Jason. He took it with him. Another gentleman had a map of the Spring Mills Curves that I think is the most critical there to be corrected. And when I got an email a week or two ago, they said they were going to put guardrails on it, and I just laughed about it, because they won't last a week, I mean, it's just wasting their money and time. But he really took an interest, took the map, and said they would try their hardest to address this issue and try to straighten that road out. And they, they have, they don't have to do anything, tear a house down, do anything to correct it. So hopefully that will get some attention, but I hope you all did too, you left there feeling like, well, at least we, we got, I don't want to say our money's worth, but we got our time worth by putting some input into it, and I felt good about it. The, later that evening, we had the ambulance authority meeting, and business as usual. I would compliment that board, I think it's a really good board, and I think Dave Urban does a really good job of president of that board, and I've been really impressed since I've been on that over the last five months. Also, Friday, I attended the dedication of the Shug Kizner Memorial Bridge. Eddie and Jim were there, and it was a well-attended, very nice, perfect weather, and I thought that, that went really well, and was well-deserving for that bridge to be named after Shug Kizner. And then yesterday, I met with Trent Sherman and the AD from Martinsburg High School, Ron Stevens, Superintendent of Schools, and Chuck Seibert from the Girls' Softball League. And Anthony set in on the meeting, and it's county-owned property, the girls' softball has a 99, well, they have a lease through 2099 to use that property of the counties. But Anthony's going to work on the MOU, the high school's going to invest, and Ron Stevens is supporting this as superintendent, invest several hundred thousand dollars into that field to improve the one they use. There's going to be a working agreement between the two, so that regardless of who is in charge in the future, it'll be in writing, so that everybody understands the responsibilities, and there'll no longer be a charge to the school system that used the field. And scheduling-wise, it should be something that everybody right now is very cooperative and willing to do, so. I was, I was very pleased on that. We're still working on our end to commit some lighting to the project over there. And Gary, Gary Wynn has been working really hard with the people that are doing our LED lighting here, which is millions and millions of dollars. The company that's providing all this lighting is called Cooper, and he's been talking with those folks about, they, they are probably one of the best in the country, if not the best, and particularly, one of their strong points is athletic field lighting. And, you know, you can buy cheaper versions of so-and-so, but it's not the quality of certain ones, so you got to compare apples to apples. But Gary's working hard with them to provide us something at a really reduced price, hopefully, that we can afford to help them out and light some fields over there. And again, it's making improvements on county property. One of the other things that came into discussion, the school system also is looking at lighting the tennis courts in the county. And of course, Martinsburg High School uses Peter Falkland Park, which is, again, county-owned property, for their practices and tennis matches, home matches, and there's a chance that they could fund lighting those tennis courts. So that's, that's another thing that could be really positive. And we talked about, of course, if we could all work together and get the parking lot over there on county property at Peter Falkland Gate as, as three or four agencies together, it would take the burden off of one agency, and maybe we can accomplish that too through the next year, so. I appreciate Anthony's input, I'm sure he'll do what he needs to do to get it corrected, and, and, and. You felt good about the meeting yesterday, didn't you, Anthony, as good as I did?
I did, I mean, it's just, the school board and the softball league need to work out, they need to work out, and we just have to work it out. Council just, yes. They've got their lease, any changes to that, it's, it's, they will have to come with council, it's county property. They just need to work on the details of that in the MOU, the county. And maybe it's going to be very cooperative.
Will we sign off on that too, or have Jim sign off on it, you think, on our end?
Yes, yeah.
I think we should.
It'll be the consensus of the group here, and then you must, or a signature. So. But other than that, that's it.
Thank you very much, okay. Eddie?
Yes, sir, I want to touch just a couple minutes on our meeting with DOH. Their, their folks, I think that, at the end of the day, they have a better perspective of what our challenges are here. I know that our staff, our, our planning and engineering staff have had multiple meetings with some of their leadership. You know, they're, they're really working aggressively to try to address a lot of potholes, that was one of the things they really wanted to talk a lot about. And I'm like, well, we need, we need roads, you know, so took the opportunity to, you know, emphasize the need for Route 9 West around Hedgesville. Route 901, Suffer Spring Road, Fish Hatchery Road, Route 45 from Exit 12 to Arden, you know, just to improve that road, the amount of traffic that's on there now, and, and it's going to be in the future, just try to bring, you know, discussion to them, so that they understand where, where we are. And I did have the privilege of attending the bridge dedication for past sheriff and commissioner Shug Kizner, who was a, you know, great community leader and friend to many. And Steve, your comments were very well presented, and thank you for, for your contribution for that day. And also Delegate Height, he's the one that, that took the, the lead on that to get that set up. Had the opportunity on Memorial Day weekend to attend the Morgan Cabin, they had a memorial service, had a couple, well, actually, they had four different veterans speak, two of which were Vietnam vets, and it's very well done, you know, appreciate, appreciate their service to our country. Also attended the memorial at War Memorial Park, it was very well done. Was on R and R on Tuesday, we spoke about a lot of different things, emergency services was, you know, one of them, and talked about the need for the one cent sales tax, or some type of funding mechanism for our emergency services to grow as needed, through the sheriff's office, school resource, our dispatch, fire, EMS, everything. Yesterday, I attended the construction meeting with Gary, Jack, and Tracy on the renovation of the Dunn Building. Everything there is, is moving very quickly, they have a time restraint that they're working on to try to get the tax office finished before the, the tax season hits, so they're working very aggressively to try and get that accomplished. But I just wanted to say that, that, you know, our staff, Gary, Jack, and Tracy in particular, really doing a good job. Kevin with Royal Barn Associates, they're on it, so they got a real good team pulling this off, so.
Are you talking about this year?
Yes, sir.
Tax season for this year?
Yes, sir.
Because the projected finish of it all is next year, 2020.
Yeah, but they're trying to get this tax office completed for the tax season this year.
The tax office can be done by the end of June, beginning of this month.
Yeah, the 26th of June is their target date.
It all starts crazy there in July, right?
Because if they say if they can't get it done by then, it won't be until October, so. That's it.
That's it? Alrighty, we're on time, we have a bid open, I didn't have any meetings, so we'll go forth with the bid opening. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, as Council Vice President Goconer mentioned, we are well underway with renovations to, to the Dunn Building, Phase 1, including the, the relocation of the tax department. With that relocation and the furniture that is needed, we were not, it wasn't necessary to put that out for bid, so. That furniture, we got proposals on, has been ordered, hopefully that'll be in before June 26. This, next, the next furniture needed is for the IT department and voter's registration, which we call Furniture Package 1 and Furniture Package 2, with Furniture Package 1 being the IT department, furniture as well as petitions, and same thing with voter's registration. And when you look at the bid sheet, it's actually broken out lump sum for Package 1 and lump sum for Package 2. The RFP was distributed to 12 office furniture companies on May 10, 2023. The RFP was also placed on the website and our social media platforms. League-wide, appeared in the Martinsburg Journal. On Friday, February 12, 2023, we do have certification of publication on filing in your packet. Between the distribution of the original RFP and the bid open, or the submission of bids, there were three addendums issued to the original RFP. Deadline for bids was 4:00 PM yesterday, Wednesday, May 31, 2023, and we're very pleased to say that we got five bids prior to the deadline, so.
Very good.
There they are.
So Package 1 and 2, is that just one bid?
Package 1 is, it's all in the same bid sheet, but it's broken out in separate lump sums. So for example, if Company A comes in low with furniture for Package 1, we could award it to them. If Company B comes in low for the furniture, we'll, we can award it separately.
I'll go back whether, according to that, we did have a new application received from Scott McAvoy for the Board of Zoning Appeals. We're ready to, a real appointment, just let me know. No, he's already been interviewed, it's just a real appointment. No. Oh, he's been off for a while? Oh, so we have to re, okay. Yeah, I guess we'll bring him back in, make a point, does that sound all right?
He's probably next to the, next to the last.
A lot of pictures of furniture. First bid packet is for the furniture. One Nation. Is that the right one? Sounds like my granddaughter opened the Christmas tree. One Nation from 211 West N A, N E S H A N N O C K Avenue. New Wilmington, PA, for $109,950. One Nation from 211 West Neshanoke Avenue, New Wilmington, PA, for $109,950.
That total?
No, that's Packet One.
How much?
Furniture Packet Two, Area E, $44,998. One Nation Distribution. I think that's the only one. I did short my night, but he could do that.
He did. Thank you. I think thank you. Cut my fingers off.
Yeah, don't do that. You're the medics, you got to take care of yourself. All right, the summer furniture and design. Summer furniture and summer night?
Funny, huh?
Packet One. Individual prices here, total them all up. Let's see, this includes delivery and setup, $80,098.38. And that is for... Doesn't say the quote, let's save this one out. Say number two. So we had three packets, or three bids?
Five.
Oh, okay. Labor's Office Furniture, how's that? Package number one is $68,336.47. Furniture Packet Two, $34,027.36. And they're out of Hagerstown. This one, WB Mason. Area P. Area P is $82,165. Area E is $32,110. Packet One, Packet Two, every one of you guys. Is that it? One more?
That's it.
That's it?
Never know. After this one. If you want one more. That's it.
This is furniture and interiors, the supply room. Packet One, or Area P, $54,372.84. Okay? That'll conclude the bid opening. By golly, look at that, we're almost on time. Mr. Will, we have 31 estate settlements for the month of June. Has that changed?
No, Mr. President, that has not changed. Good morning, Councilman. This morning, I asked for this council's consideration of the 30 estates for final and or interim settlements for the month of June 2023. All estates brought before this council are identical to those found in your read ahead. All estates have been published in the Martinsburg Journal to indicate these states' pending settlement status in accordance with West Virginia law. Further, all estates have been adequately legally or actually noticed to the interested parties therein, and to date, no such parties have filed written objections to any settlements proposed here today. Lastly, all claims of debt against these 31 estates have either been released indicating full or partial reimbursement of the debt or been written off as as the indebted estate has been reported as being insolvent, meaning no probate assets remained to pay creditors nor distributed to heirs or beneficiaries. With that, I ask that this council consider the 31 estates for final or interim settlement for the month of June 2023.
Okay. Does everybody kind of went through them and looked to see if everything's okay with them?
I only recognized a couple of names.
Okay. All righty, do I have a motion to accept the final settlement for 31 estates for the month of June?
Mr. President, I have moved to accept the 31 estates for final settlement for June 1, 2023.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. And there's no estates to be scheduled, right?
That's correct.
Wonderful. There you go, sir.
Thank you. You have a good day.
All righty. And now we have Mark Chivon, Executive Director, Farmland Protection Board. Introduction of the new executive director, Risa Ingram-Morsini. Come on up.
Good morning, Councilman. Kind of, I did a sweet memory. If I can say goodbye to you all, I enjoyed working with you for...
Well, don't say goodbye. How about we'll see you later?
I can do that.
What are you going to do? Man, I just wanted...
Well, I crossed a quarter of a million miles on a motorcycle last year. I got another quarter million, I'm hoping to do.
All right.
Wow.
Headed off 55 counties in West Virginia last year, so I'm thinking maybe Pennsylvania? I don't know, I've got to choose another state to follow the residents out there.
Well, you know, the roads in Pennsylvania are challenging.
Yes, and maybe Virginia instead. Miss Virginia, sorry, I shouldn't.
I heard I heard there's two seasons in Pennsylvania for the road workers. It's winter and construction, so be careful out there.
Yeah, the colleague that runs the Foreland Protection Department in Preston County, West Virginia, claims there's two counties up there, winter and the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Kind of the same thing.
So you can confirm that Berkeley County is the most congested county in the state of West Virginia for us with the DOH, right?
I can, yeah, absolutely. And we've got bottles. And I pick up nails in the tire because I just had one down. Got one coming up in the model. I'm here for another month, but I'd like to not go before you guys get permission to pose amazement moving forward, but Risa Ingram-Morsini will be for the selected her. She was our number one candidate, and we're very pleased to bring her on board. So we're going to do a month of kind of cross-training. And the next time that someone goes before you to get permission to pose an easement, it's going to be Risa.
Very good. Nice to have you here, Risa. Been a long time since our paths have crossed. I don't know if you know that or not, but...
Yeah, distant relation.
Not too far distant, but a couple, couple cousins away. Glad to have you on board, and it's good to see you.
I encourage you to keep as much distance as possible.
Yeah, for your for your safety, probably would be the ultimate thing. But I love my family, so.
I remember, how's it, your dad was Randy?
Yes.
Randy was a good friend of mine. Basketball player.
Yes.
He loved his basketball.
We used to ride motorcycles together.
That does not surprise me.
On more than one occasion, so.
I think I had your point in high school.
You did. Yes, you did. Yeah, I was happy to to learn that that you were going to be Mark's replacement. And I want to wish you the very best. And I'm going to tell you right now, you have big shoes to fill.
Yes.
Mark has done a tremendous job with acquiring the the easements that have come before that that board and is very well respected. And thank you for your service, Mark, and your leadership. And, you know, I wish you the very best. And there's no doubt in my mind that you can't do this. And I know where you come from. And so you've got, you've got all the right things, just put them to use here. Yep, indeed. Speak, I'm good, sorry, go ahead.
Good luck, I know your dad. Quite an individual. I don't know if you inherited any of his characteristics, but...
I don't know. Hopefully only the good ones.
Oh, I didn't know there were any good ones, but okay.
You got his laugh, yeah. And his smile.
But good luck to you.
She does have big shoes to fill because the board was, did everything they could to keep, try to keep Mark going.
Yes, Andy Hamilton passed, tried to pass a resolution. Retire, and, you know, in all fairness, I thought the board knew this was going for two years, so it's been well maintained, so we're smooth. And Risa will do an excellent job. I mean, I didn't know what I was doing, it came half years ago, so we can come in and not know what you're doing now. No, for the point.
Well, it's it's very, very important to our, to our fabric and our culture in this county to be able to maintain those farmlands that that folks present to us. We're we're under attack, truthfully, through development, and it's it's mostly all because of our proximity to great things, you know, the the Baltimore, Washington region, the northern Virginia region, you know? So it's a very desirable place to live. And the the more farmland that we can protect, the better it will be for all of us.
We have conventions for health support, and we've not had a single application to many part of the county between 81 and 811. We just, we don't. We've taken a lot of applications, some interest in the Greensburg Road area, in that creek. We have prime farmland there, prime soil. And I see the system is working perfectly. It's a good balance of industrial development, commercial residential development, and all prime farms are still being protected. So we come up and walk away with this, we're balanced at home.
And that's a hard one to balance sometimes, I mean, for our area. It's, but you seem to have gotten a grasp on it and worked it well, so.
Well, we've had great people there, from all from the board to our property owners and applicants who have proposed an easement to this council for being support.
Well, Risa, again, welcome aboard, and looking forward to having you come in with with a lot of programs for acquisition of some farmland. And if you need anything, there's a great staff in here that can help you answer, I'm sure, any questions or you know how to track us down too, so.
Thank you, yes.
Well, good to have you all. Thank you so much.
Take care.
All righty, I'd say we're a little bit ahead of time, but we're going to take a break here, and we'll come back and have Tim Zia with Community Corrections Director and an update on some of the catalysts program. So stay tuned, we'll be right back.
Okay, good afternoon again, or almost afternoon, how about that? We're back in session. And Tim Zia with the Community Corrections Director, an update on Catalyst Program.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm here to just share a little bit with you about our Catalyst Program. Catalyst is our juvenile program that was launched in...
Twenty?
Twenty? Twenty twenty-one? October-ish?
Yes.
I'm losing track of time. The Day Report Center started in August of 2016, and we've just served adults. There's been a pretty gaping hole in our area of services like this for our youth. HIDA has been, Washington Baltimore HIDA has been our most significant financial contributor to these efforts at our county. I did the rough math this morning. I hadn't given it much thought recently, but HIDA has given us an excess of $2 million since we started back in 2016. Dr. Laura Pfar, who will be here shortly, is the Deputy Director of Treatment for HIDA down there. She, through conversation with us, recognized that we had a need to help out our youth. There's a lot of youth in our community that struggle for various reasons and just need some help. So Laura wrote for a SAMSA grant. She attempted to get us some funding through SAMSA for these efforts. We were not awarded the grant, but she made it her mission to find the money. And she found the money through HIDA and, you know, the beginning of Catalyst and the continuing support that they've given us is really ultimately why this program exists now. And we're grateful for everything that she's done. The Director of Washington Baltimore HIDA is with us as well, Mr. Tom Carr. I can't say enough about just how important their support has been to our county. But I'm here this morning just to tell you a little bit about Catalyst. Catalyst is a program that serves youth aged twelve to seventeen in our community. We started in October of 2021, and the program has grown significantly. There's, I don't even know the accurate number today, it's more than fifty, more than fifty kids are currently enrolled, and we've served more than that. There's a lot of technical support that HIDA's provided, a lot of data tracking. I'm gonna let Erin share with you some of the more specific data regarding Catalyst, and she's gonna introduce a couple to you. But before she comes up, Laura, would you like to come up and say a few words about Catalyst?
Welcome, Dr. Pfar. We're so honored to have you here with us.
Thank you, thank you. And I just wanted to kind of give you some context about the model itself and working with Tim and his fantastic team, and I'll talk about that in just a second. When Tim was describing the need in the community, what we did was, I, after getting the rejection letter from SAMSA, I went to Tom and I said, you know, Tom, I know that we've never funded youth before with our treatment funds, but how would you feel about considering this? And if you all know Tom, Tom is a big-picture thinker, and he is innovative, and he didn't even bludge. He described the entire process that we'd need to go through to get the permission for that with a board, and we did it very quickly. And Tom also is someone who will fund different models. This is a new model, and I just wanted to characterize it very briefly for you. What you have here is a model that is really a synthesis of a variety of different programs and strategies that have been proven to work. So on the first level, you've got screening, and it's really identifying those youth and really characterizing their risk. So screening for substance use, for depression, for anxiety, for suicide, for social needs, and it's a comprehensive screening so that the full package can be addressed. Beyond that screening, then, early intervention, treatment, and recovery strategies are then implemented, and all of these strategies have been proven to work. So they're not implementing just arbitrary strategies. They are implementing evidence-based strategies that we have the science to support. But I will tell you, the real reason that Catalyst works beyond that infrastructure of the model and the beautiful synthesis of it by this team is that the youth trust, the Berkeley County Day Report Center team. These, it would not have been successful with just any team. The characteristics that you have in these individuals are remarkable, and I want you all to know that we've worked with multiple communities across the entire United States, and I say this very sincerely. But Catalyst, you'll hear the numbers, has been successful because of the people sitting right in front of you today. So that's just a brief description of what you're going to hear about in terms of the service delivery model and how it all came together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Tom, would you care to come up? I certainly want to give you the opportunity.
Thanks, Tim. Good morning. It's a pleasure to be with you.
Thank you for coming in, and we're honored to have you with us.
Yes, sir. It's my pleasure. My grandmother was from West Virginia, so I have a sort of a heart to stake in this sort of thing.
Very good.
The Office of National Drug Control Policy, the Drug Zards Office, funds the HIDA program. There are now thirty-three HIDAs nationwide. We're the largest, at least financially, not necessarily geographically, but we cover most of Maryland, all of DC, large parts of Virginia, and three counties in West Virginia including Berkeley County. We are one of two HIDAs that fund treatment and prevention. All the rest are law enforcement or interventions. So we fund law enforcement, treatment, and prevention. And Laura's right, when we first started off, we started off working on the hardcore drug population, the adult population. But the drug problem has changed over the years, the complexity of it, the folks and the effects. So when Laura came to me about Catalyst, I thought it was just high time that we did something with kids. There was nothing barring it other than the bureaucracy, and that was, those folks have changed, and we're able to cut through the red tape and get this funded, and I'm glad we did. And you, Laura said it best, but I'm gonna repeat it. Everything's in the people. You can have the best programs in the world, you can have all the money in the world, but if you don't have the right people running them, they go to hell and I am back. You've got the right person running this with Tim. We have faith in him, and he's, we performed well with our other programs that we were funding here, and it was just a natural fit to fund the Catalyst program. And I'm glad it's exceeded our expectations, it's succeeding extremely well, and we're looking forward to supporting Tim, you guys, and more importantly, these kids as time goes on.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for having us up today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is, are you federally funded, or how does HIDA, how did it?
It's funded out of the Office of National Drug Control Policy. All the funds are coming to HIDA as federal funds.
Okay.
However, this gets a little complicated, because we've worked through fiduciaries. So the fiduciaries that handle the grant money for us are the University of Baltimore, George Mason University, and Mercyhurst University. You've probably heard of the first two. Mercyhurst is a private university in Erie, Pennsylvania. They have an intelligence program, that's how I get connected with them. But by having our money divided that way, it gives us much more flexibility, because if I wanted to buy computers or things for a program through a state university like the University of Baltimore or George Mason, I then have to go through all their procurement processes and bureaucracy. If I want to buy computers through Mercyhurst University, they just say, how much was it? So it really expedite things that we can do. In fact, this program is funded through the Mercyhurst University.
Mercyhurst.
Mercyhurst, yes. So Sisters of Mercyhurst.
And the three counties, are there only three in West Virginia that are?
The only three that are in our...
In your area?
There are a number of counties in West Virginia that are in the area.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
It's federal money, but it turns to state finances. Anything else?
I'd like to thank you. Every time we have a discussion, your name comes up as a big supporter. And thank you for your partnership with Berkeley County and your commitment to our program. You've obviously played a major role in helping with our success that we've had, along with Tim and his team. You know, they're at it every day, you know, seven days a week, probably actually more than we know, more than I may even know. But thank you, thank you for your efforts.
Well, Laura and all my staff, I thank you. It's a pleasure to work here. It's great when things happen the ways they're supposed to happen, and you get results. So thank you.
Tom, for the past ten years, we've had, I've had the pleasure of working with you, in the first of it, you and Ruth, and now it's you and Laura. You folks have never, ever not come through with anything we've asked for. I know sometimes we've come in with some unusual requests, but you've always found a way to work with us.
Just a couple times.
Couple times.
But needed.
You know, and I always tell Tim, go ask Tom, what can you do, say no. But for, for an agency that's, that's responsible for federal money, you folks have been more responsive than just about anyone, anyone at that level that we've ever worked with. And we do appreciate, you know, all of the, I don't know, all the upfront money that you give us, but you know, throughout the course of the fiscal year, when you have a little extra left over from some of the underperforming programs, you always reach out to us to see whether there's any additional help you can give us.
And Ellen, you always able to...
We're happy to take, we're happy to take your money.
Yes, sir.
So we do, we do appreciate that, so. But you, you, the past ten years, it has been my very great pleasure to work with you folks. And look what we started with, you know, in, you know, 2015, 16, and what we're at now. It's just, it's incredible. And it's been a true partnership, and I very much appreciate all of you guys.
Thank you. Yes, it's our pleasure. Anything else?
Thank you again, but, yeah, Tim.
Now I'm gonna introduce to you Erin Mills. Erin is our clinical supervisor at the Day Report Center. Erin supervises all of our therapists. She sees, oversees the operation of our Medicaid billings, and she also oversees the operation of Catalyst, and she's gonna come and share some data with you and...
Hey, Tim, before she does that, I have a question for you. So the kids, you said there's fifty-some early enrolled. I assume it's a voluntary, probably volunteer program?
Yes, sir.
To do that? And I assume also that the parents have to, or legal guardians have to sign off on the kids participating in the program as well?
Yes, sir. We love for the parents to be involved in, in the program themselves. I think that's vitally important.
So they come to you voluntarily, or is there people that even direct enrollees to you? How does that work? Or is this totally the individual makes that decision to come and participate?
Well, technically, they could, but we generally receive referrals for Catalyst from school counselors, DHHR social workers.
All kinds of different?
We've gotten a few from the emergency.
Agencies, right.
Yes. Yep. So when they're referred, we, we reach out to them and...
But again, if they have to, the parents have to agree to allow you to...
Yes, this isn't, this isn't a court order.
Individuals, right.
Right. Yeah.
Does it, does it work with JOTIP?
Sometimes. Yep, we've gotten some referrals through the JOTIP program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome, Erin. Good to have you this morning.
Yes, thank you for having us. I appreciate it. Catalyst is well into its second year providing treatment to juveniles and their families at the Berkeley Day Report Center. This morning, I would like to share with you the data that has been collected from our first year of treatment to show the impact of this program that has had on our community. In total, for our first year, Catalyst served sixty-seven participants. These are juveniles referred to as, as Tim just said, from DHHR, Berkeley County Schools, the probation office, the emergency department, and even families who are self-refering their youth for treatment, recognizing that they need assistance. Upon intake into our program, assessments are completed to identify risk factors and to guide our treatment. Of those assessments completed, sixty-three percent of our youth identified severe risk of substance use, primarily marijuana, alcohol, and nicotine. Fifty-eight percent identified struggling with externalizing behaviors such as impulsivity, attention deficits, and hyperactivity. And more than half of our youth identified moderate to severe symptoms of anxiety and depression. This treatment is recommended to be at least three months in order to see a positive change. Most of our juveniles remain in treatment longer than the recommended minimum as they work towards achieving recovery, their mental and emotional well-being, and other life goals. The treatment provided includes individual and family therapy, peer recovery groups, peer coaching, and case management services. And I would like to take a minute just to introduce the providers who are working with our youth and our families. So over here, I have Caitlin Brown and Megan Riedel. They are two of our juvenile therapists providing individual and family therapy. We have Ms. Bree Ambers, and behind her, Ms. Erica Reiner. They are our Catalyst case managers. And then in the back, I have Joseph Easy. He is our peer recovery coach who runs our peer recovery support groups and does our individual peer recovery coaching. And I'll just echo what everybody has already said, it's the team that makes the difference. We work well together, and we are dedicated to serving our community and the juveniles and the families that come to us. As a result of all of this hard work that our juveniles and their families have put into their own recovery and well-being, and the treatment provided by the Catalyst staff, we have identified significant decreases in reported substance use and symptoms of depression and anxiety. Youth reported decreasing their use of all substances, again, including marijuana, alcohol, and nicotine, many of them achieving abstinence from all illicit substances. Even six months after completing treatment with Catalyst program, many were still sustaining their recovery and staying away from all illicit substances. Symptoms of depression decreased by almost fifty percent, and symptoms of anxiety decreased by sixty-six percent. One participant is quoted as saying, "The Catalyst program made me realize that even with struggles I have every day, I can still make a life for myself and do what I want to do." We are seeing positive changes, and I hope to be able to share with you the continued impact of our program at the end of year two. In order to emphasize the impact of our program, we have a couple of our recent Catalyst graduates who are gonna share with you about their experience. So I'll first introduce Colin.
Morning.
Morning.
Good. How you doing?
So I got into Catalyst because I was at school being, had something on me I shouldn't have had that. And then I was given the option to go to an explosion queue, go to trains, or do this. At first, I wanted nothing to do with it, and I was like, I'll check it out, I'll look at it, look into it. I was very open-minded to it and what it could do for me, especially when I had people like Joe there who could really help a lot. Talking to him every Monday was always my favorite part of the week. The screenings, three times a week, it really keeps it hard on you, so even if you do have that thought in the back of your head, like, I just need, just, just one more time, or some, some, something little like that, it's like, it keeps it hard on you, and I liked it that way. It was good, it kept me honest. Then I would have my random visits with Erica, getting to talk to her, just really be involved with everybody, that was good. And then Joe helped me through my...
What's that book called?
Yeah, there it is. The Rat Book. So it helps you for, whenever you're out of the program, just standing in it. And that's helped a lot, continuing, staying sober and keeping after it's been really good for my head.
You got some plans coming up too, don't you?
I do. So June twelfth, I'll leave for basic and AIT, and when I get back from that, I'm trying to find an orientation date for the college I'm going to up in Ohio.
Very good.
And now we have Hayden, who's gonna come join us.
Hello, Marty.
Hello.
When I first started Catalyst, I was in a really bad place. I got arrested twice before that, I think, and I ended up getting kicked out of drug court, but they still kept me. I went there three times. Finally graduated, I think, April, April, I graduated, April eleventh. It's a really positive experience having everybody there. It was cool to be able to come up and know that if I'm having a bad day, I always have somebody to talk to, like Kate Lynn was my therapist. She's awesome. The entire team is really cool. Joe especially, because even when we had groups with a bunch of kids, he would always take the time for each individual person to check on and see how they're doing. So that's a really cool team. Just like Colin said, the drug tests, they do keep you on. I didn't take many of them there, because I was a bit out there, they shouldn't have gone. It's a really good experience, and I love everybody there. I still go there, even though I'm not in the program.
Very good.
But it's a very good place, yeah. So I don't know what to talk about.
So you're saying it's working?
Yeah. Yeah, they definitely helped me out. Appreciate it. I was in a really bad place, and they helped me, so. Much love to everybody at the program.
Very good. Congratulations.
Where are you going to basic? Fort Ben. Do you think if the problems that you were having, there wasn't an intervention provided, you would want to basic training?
Yeah, if there wasn't that, probably wouldn't have stopped smoking, doing all that, which I would say wouldn't be able to, during the military, go from there without that. Probably wouldn't be able to go to college because I'm going to be a hybrid profession technician, and so working in the shop, you can't do things like that. So I'm very appreciative for this, especially for that. They gave me a path.
I'm thoroughly impressed that you all are willing to come up here and turn this around seriously. There are a lot of, there are a lot of people that aren't, I mean, adults, especially younger people that might get into talking about my problems.
Even the older people don't like to do it, too.
Yeah, there is, there is no shame in admitting that you got a problem and you felt it. When I was a young man, I went down the wrong road, and now I found myself in a mess. Be real, seven or eight years in my... Be real, seven or eight years of my life, I'm not ashamed of that. It shaped me into the person that I am today, and hopefully the experiences that you all had when you were young and the mistakes that you made are going to shape me into a better man than before. Thank you for coming. Are you all parents?
Yes.
Would you all like to?
Yes.
Come on.
That's okay. Bear with me.
I just want to say, so after a couple of incidents at school, turned into basic the option was expulsion or transitional school. Neither of these were options, in Colin's dad's and I's opinion, that were going to benefit him. We decided we were going to fight, whether that meant fighting an expulsion here and fighting transitional school. And the principal came back with an option for Catalyst, and we jumped at it. We did discuss it as a family, and as Colin said, at first, he was a little, I don't know. We decided to go ahead and give it a go. Decision ended up being more of a blessing than we ever knew it would be. As parents, we hope that our kids find mentors that they can go to, look up to, learn from, trust, look for guidance from, and keep them accountable, and they need just a little bit more than we can provide for them. This is exactly what Colin found in Catalyst with Erica, Joe, Aaron, Bree, and that's just to name a few of the people that were so supportive of him throughout the program and even afterwards. During Colin's time in the program, from early on, it was very evident that no one a part of this program wanted to see any of these kids fail from executing the program. The investing, for those executing the program, to the kids that were invested in the program. They all genuinely cheered on achievements made by the participants and were equally as heartbroken by those that just couldn't make the program work for them. Colin, with this program, thrived and came back from what could have been a total downward spiral. During the program, he signed with the West Virginia Army National Guard in their senior program, completing drill weekends while a senior. He's since completed a stellar senior wrestling season, graduated this past week, and will leave for basic training in AIT on June twelfth. He is also accepted into UNOH's High Performance Auto Program and will be attending the school in February of 2024 while continuing monthly drill weekends here in West Virginia. Catalyst, the people involved, helped his dad and I put this young man with a very bright path, on the right path again, and he's not looking back, only looking forward.
Very good. That's great.
Would you like to share? You don't have to. Okay. Well, these are just two out of a bunch of the youth in our community who, whose lives have been positively intervened in as a result of this program. I'm grateful for it. I mean, I have to assume you all are tickled to hear a couple of testimonies. This is the, you know, a result of the work that you all have done, the support that HIDE has given us, and most importantly, the staff who make this program amazing. One of the most challenging parts of my role is finding the right people. I take that very seriously. It's important for me to staff this thing the way it needs to be staffed, and it's all about finding the right people. Catalyst team does amazing work. I'm grateful for it. Very good.
Yeah, you know, Tim, you know, every time you come here, you always amaze me in the success. And I know there's probably difficult days, but you always bring these folks, and they rise to the top, and that's what we want. You know, we want your staff to be the best that you can work with. You know, the folks that are coming there for help, you know, they don't have very many options. There weren't very many options available to them, and they were going down a path they probably shouldn't have been going. But thankfully, the county had programs available through your leadership and your staff initiatives that they were able to get these guys back on track. And, you know, to both of you that came before us today, Colin, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name.
Colin and Kayden.
Kayden. Kayden, thank you for doing it. Thanks for having the courage to come before us. And, you know, please always remember, there's other kids just like you out here, and every now and then, you might need to reach back and help one of them. So please take that opportunity throughout your life to say, hey, come here, let me talk to you about this. You know, I've been down this same road. Always reach back and give back, you know, to other kids. So thank you for what you do, and keep doing it, and we'll continue to try to support, especially to the youth. You know, always got a soft spot for kids to make sure they have the very best available to them.
Yep. Absolutely. The facility over there, we're getting ready to put another eight or nine million dollars in that facility because we have the confidence in what you're doing there and how it's positively affected the community. But you're absolutely right. We can have a, my career, Parks and Rec, we can have a million-dollar gymnastics wing, but the girl that ran that program, Kat Sloan Reeves at the time, was lived, eat, breathe, gymnastics, and made that program. Eric Cash Cowell, we were there for many years. So you're absolutely right. You can have the greatest facility in the world, but if you don't have the right people to run that program, it doesn't work. And so we compliment you, Tim, as a leader, and your whole entire staff. It's just wonderful. We do really appreciate it. It's great to hear the testimony of some young people that have experienced it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Tim.
All right. Anything else? Anybody have any questions or comments? Next up, we have a board and commission interview. Is Philip Petrie here? Not? Okay. Ms. Helen, we're going to have you come on up. We're waiting on one of the candidates, but interview for the museum board. We're so lucky to have you here with us this morning.
I was trying to get Leonard to do it, but he backed out.
Oh, darn. We'd like, well, we'd still like to see him one day. He can come in with us, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having me here this morning.
Tell us about, I was going to say, go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself that we don't know and.
I think everybody knows everything about me, but I was one out of twelve children that my mom had. And I always say that if I was not with Leonard, I don't know if I would be doing all the different things that I do. And I do enjoy everything that I do. And I realize, being with him, how important it is to be part of the community and give back to the community, and so I have tried my best to do that. I enjoy, I always tell everybody, one of the boards that I enjoy being on the most has always been the Berkeley County Development Authority, and is coming to an end next year because we thought it was important to put in term limits. But that's one board that I really enjoy being on, and I thank you all for having me to be part of that for almost fifteen years. That's why we thought it was important to put in term limits. But I also, I'm really involved in my church. That, I should say, that is first and foremost, who I hope I am, is a person of faith, and just being involved in church. And also, church gives me the strength and the nourishment and the food that I need to continue to reach out to the community and to see people as they are, to meet people where they are in order to try to help people. So in church, I do a lot of things. I sing, I substitute for communion, I have been higher part-time as director of liturgy, and that is a challenge, but that is something that I truly loved and always loved also. I have two little grandbabies that keep me busy and give me all their little diseases. You can tell by my voice, I recently got over a cold, and also recently, for the first time, had pink eye. That came from my dear little granddaughter. I just don't know what else to say without, you know, I don't want to brag on what I do, but I just love all the different things I do in the community, just to keep me, it keeps me busy. My daughter asked me, "Mom, don't you think you do too much?" And I said, "Would you say that if I didn't have your two babies to take care of?" So I just enjoy keeping busy, and it also, it keeps my mind going, you know? I'm just afraid that if I sit back and do nothing, what would happen, you know? And hopefully, there would be other people out there who will also keep busy and realize the importance of giving back to the community. Think of how this community will look if we all just gave a little bit. And then those who give a lot will be so tired. So.
Well, you do give a lot to this community, and I'm thankful for that.
I enjoy every bit of it. Every bit of it.
HD, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'll just say a few things. I think you know a lot of the history of Berkeley County and things at the Raymer Center and all those things over there that are great assets to our history here in Berkeley County, and I think you would be a great asset to this museum board. You know, we would like to lift that up. We want to do multiple facets of the museum throughout and have one whole headquarters of a museum and have our smaller pieces of the museum as well. I think you would be a great part of that team to help bring all that together and make it happen. The knowledge that you and Leonard have together is great, and I think it would be great for this project.
Well, I am really glad to see this project take place because there is a lot of history in this county. And if it had not been for our group to save these schools when they were at risk of being sold, which was Raymer School, Brook Street School, and Pike Side School, then that history would not be there. And we felt that it was very important to save that school and the other schools so that therefore we can place our history there, and people can see what Black students went through in Berkeley County, but also Blacks in general, what they went through in Berkeley County. We're very thankful that you all are doing this. Thank you.
Steve, questions?
I've known Leonard Harris since my mid-seventies. When I started in Parks and Rec, and Leonard was an advisor to the park board back then, and so we've been friends ever since. And over the years, of course, in knowing Leonard, I've got to know you and Helen as well. If you've never taken the time to go to the Summer Raymer School, and it's like a museum in itself, a small one, but the whole history of Black Heritage here in Berkeley County is there right in front of you. Such a wonderful place that's been, you know, saved over the years and all that history. It's just amazing, and I agree, too, that you could play a real key role to the museum, to the whole entire county. It'd be great. We appreciate all you've done for our community, you and Harris, Leonard both, so thank you so much.
Eddie?
Well, I have the pleasure of serving with you on the Development Authority, and one of the things that, I mean, I didn't really have a chance to know you. I knew of you, but I did not know you. I always knew your husband, probably since, probably late seventies, I've known Leonard. But the thing that I appreciate the most is that your willingness to speak your mind. You do not walk out the door without letting everybody know your thoughts, your opinions, and that's appreciated. And I would like to know what you think, what's your vision of this regional museum? You know, when you think about it, what do you see?
I see somebody walking in the door and being able to go to different areas in order to educate themselves and learn more about Berkeley County. I would hope that people will go in with an open mind, and especially when it comes to African-Americans and their value to this county and what they have done, not just here, but throughout the world, even though I know we're talking about Berkeley County. But they have to go in with an open mind and be ready to consume that information. But even with the other parts of the museum in Berkeley County, I just hope that people would educate themselves, and I think it's mostly important to our students. And I think students, you know, once this is up and running, that the Berkeley County school system will get involved and have field trips to the museum, because we've been working on that with, you know, with the Summer Raymer Museum, and we've only had a couple times when students actually came in to seek out the information. A few times, we went out to give the information. But I would hope to see students take field trips to that museum, so therefore they can learn more about what's going on in Berkeley County.
Thank you. I'm sure that the rich history that you and me have and all your friends together in this community would benefit so greatly with your assistance on the board. And I can say this, that my mom and her sister loved you singing.
Thank you. Well, I would say this for Leonard. You know, the kids used to always say, "Everybody knows my daddy," right? And I remember, it happened twice. We were in Florida, we were in the Bahamas, and somebody was there who knew Leonard. And I always remember, the oldest daughter said, "See? I said everybody knew my daddy." But he is one that has worked very hard in this community. Even when he was, people was trying to slap him down or saying mean things about him, he just kept going, no matter what. So, you know, like I was, like I said, I was hoping that he would be the one on this board, but he said, "Helen, you do it." So here I am. But as long as I have his support to be out of the house one more time doing something, that's okay with me.
I'm sure he'll offer his input if you are. I was thinking the same thing. I can't believe that he would not have a part of it.
Yeah, he'll be telling me.
Helen, we get Leonard, too.
Yeah, believe me, he'd be behind us, saying, "Well, Helen, they should do this. Helen, they should do that." So, but thank you all.
And we would welcome that with open, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Okay.
All righty. We don't have Philip? All righty. We do have an executive session, and any action?
No, sir, it's just one brief.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and do items from the public? Nope? All righty. I need a motion to go into executive session for legal matters?
I need a motion to go into executive session for legal matters. No action will be taken.
No action.
We're sorry. Yes, there will be.
There will be action.
There will be action. That's my floor.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session. Thank you.